Good evening, everyone. Hello, hello. Hi, this is Joe Malas, Superintendent of Cherry Hill Public School District. Welcome to our community town hall meeting to discuss the plans for our buildings as we move forward. For those of you who are online and those of you that are here in the auditorium at High School West, I would like you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. If everybody would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to thank everyone for taking the opportunity to join us this evening. We have a very excited 90 minutes scheduled for discussion and questions. We have a presentation to share with everyone this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and get us started. I'd like to begin by introducing the panelists that are with me this evening on the stage. We have honestly a blue ribbon panel of people who have joined us this evening. So first and foremost, I'm excited to introduce everyone to Mr. Bob Garrison. Mr. Garrison is one of the principals of Garrison Architects. He has been working with the district for a little more than a year and a half now, he and his firm. They've had the opportunity to be in all of our buildings and evaluation of all of our facilities. And he's got great information that he's been sharing throughout the community at our building-based presentations, and will be sharing information with us tonight and then answering questions. Next, I'd like to introduce our very own board president. This is Lori Neary. This is Neary.
Hello, good evening.
And board members that are with us this evening. First, Mr. Ben Ovadia and Ms. Miriam Stern. Joining us representing our teachers and instructional staff, our CHA president, Mr. Steve Redfern. From the Administrators Association and one of the assistant principals at Crusey Middle School, Ms. Michelle Smith. The chairperson of our Zone PTA, a parent in the district and an alum from the district, this is Janet Hung. We also are very excited. We have our two student board reps with us this evening. From High School West, Kevin Salvatorelli, and from High School East, Ariana Santiago Ramos. Our business administrator and assistant superintendent, this is Lynn Sugars. Assistant superintendent for pre-K to 12 curriculum and instruction, Dr. Kwame Morton. Our public information officer, Mrs. Barbara Wilson. Mrs. Wilson will also be sharing in the role of timekeeper for us again this evening, trying to make sure that we stay on track. And again, I've introduced myself, and I'm thrilled that everybody is taking some time to spend with us this evening. The presentation is being recorded, the discussion is being recorded, the information will be posted, the video will be shared on our YouTube channel tomorrow, probably by tomorrow afternoon. Presentation that Mr. Garrison delivers this evening will also be posted on our website. So without further ado, I'm thrilled to introduce Mr. Bob Garrison. I'm going to turn it over to him. Mrs. Sugars is going to move his presentation up. Mr. Garrison.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, the community, those in attendance tonight. Really appreciate you coming out and being online during this very, very busy time. The Board of Education is committed to public input and thus far have been really pleased at the elementary school presentations, the middle school presentations that I did, and the high school presentations. So we look forward to continuing that dialogue and those interactions this evening. The opening slide really tells the story. It's a district-wide, truly a district-wide improvement program. You see there, there are 19 buildings that you as taxpayers and the Board of Education are stewards of and maintaining under this program. We'll go to the agenda. Why improvements now? What have we, the Cherry Hill Board of Education, your administration, your staff, your facilities, been able to do this year, not sitting around waiting for another bond referendum to pass, but being proactive in facility maintenance and improvements? The process that they've undertaken. Why am I here this evening? What are some of the other district professionals? How did we arrive at the next item, which is the district-wide facility assessment findings? So what did we do? Dr. Malas talked about the fact that it was in every single building, every single room during the year and a half that we did our facility analysis. Why take on debt? What's the advantage to the taxpayer and the community to take on debt? Why not just build new school buildings? The answer is renovation, and we'll show you why that's fiscally responsible moving forward. Specific district-wide needs project list. I will go through an overview. It's very difficult to go through the 136 pages that are on the district website. That detail is there for you to see at your leisure, all the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools, all those details. I will summarize all of those needs in three slides in the matter of time. District-wide assessment project costs. What are those improvements cost? What do they look like? How do they relate to one another in a pie chart? How do you all benefit? How do we all benefit moving forward with the program, and what are the next steps? Your districts, as you know, as taxpayers and interesting community members, have been underfunded for decades. You've had to make do with the money that you have, focusing on program excellence in this district. Something that I've admired raising my family, growing up in a neighboring school district in Burlington County. Cherry Hill Schools focus on program excellence. That's always been something that has been at the top of the list. It's now time to turn to the building needs. The building systems need updates, they need replacement. In fact, your most recent improvement program funded by a bond passed 22 years ago in 1999, and those improvements took place over a five-year period in 2005. The bond referendum, as many of you know, and hopefully the reason that you're tuning in this evening, did not pass in 2018. We must move forward with a new plan and a new strategy. The district, as I mentioned, is not sitting by waiting for another capital program infusion of capital. They've done many, many projects this year and have planned for projects in the upcoming years. HVAC. We know how important that is to improve indoor air quality. This has been done in the district-wide fashion with building automation controls that are ongoing right now, along with select pieces of equipment replacement. District-wide interior LED lighting, ceiling replacements. Many of you saw that those improvements, especially at the elementary schools, where the corridors and the classrooms were recently done. Two publicly bid projects, ADA accessible improvements outdoors at Woodcrest Elementary and High School West. Those projects were successfully completed on time, on under budget. Stockton received a new roof, entire roofing project, almost $2 million project. It also included as a complement HVAC systems that were on those roofs. So that would be your rooftop units, your exhaust fans, all part of that expansive project. In addition, the district went and did selective roof replacements at Hart, Johnson, Payne, and Rosa Middle Schools. These were the newer sections of those buildings in 2000. Those roofs were out of warranty. We also, again, being good planning and moving forward, replaced the HVACs in all those selected areas. Emergency generator replacement is ongoing right now. The generators have been ordered for Mann, Hart, Payne, and Rosa. The bottom line with these improvements, however, is that the district paid 100% of the cost of the improvements. And we'll show you how that can be different in a successful bond referendum program. The process was Garrison Architects and the district's engineering firms. Those engineering firms, environmental resolutions, along with TTI environmental. Site visits, field surveys, evaluations of the buildings, especially essential health and life safety systems. We proposed building solutions, system replacements. We'll talk about that in a minute, an estimate of probable cost reflected in the pie chart. The district-wide facility assessment findings, HVAC, indoor air quality, heating ventilation, and the fact that many, many, many of your spaces do not have air conditioning. The goal here is to air condition all the spaces and improve indoor air quality. Americans with Disabilities Act, top, top priority. Exterior site work, continuing to do that with ramps, accessible entrances, exits, walkways, and then also on the inside of the building, making sure that we have accessible areas in your restrooms, all bathrooms, and different spaces. At the elementary school level, site work, we looked at circulation, keeping parents and students separated from each other, or the parents, students separated from the bus traffic. The playgrounds, making sure that we had impact-resistant area, access to those spaces, proper apparatus, specialized spaces, going and looking at the old libraries, making them instructional media centers, looking at the all-purpose rooms. You'll see in this example tonight, six schools don't have all-purpose rooms, and that's part of the proposal. Middle schools and high schools, in site work, circulation, bus traffic, all important to look at all of that. Specialized spaces, instructional media centers, again, a focus, science labs, robotics, steam, auditoriums, gymnasiums, all of those spaces that complete the students' curriculum. Security. You have a wonderful security system in the district. We're expanding that with door access, CCTV, and the latest technology in IT for the 21st century learning. Why take on debt to improve your schools? Because you have a partner in that regard when you do it, not out of your capital reserve account like the projects this year. New Jersey helps fund school districts only via debt service aid. You must incur debt or borrow money to get money from the state. The district is currently carrying zero debt. The state of New Jersey will fund 40% of the eligible cost of the money that you borrow for these improvements. The state will not allow school districts to carry over significant money. Mrs. Sugars, left of me, business administrator, does a wonderful job with the budget. You saw that in the projects that we finished with the roof replacements, the generators, et cetera, but you cannot carry a significant amount of money with the 2% cap requirement in New Jersey state government budgets. Why don't you just build new schools? Why don't we retire these particular buildings and look to build new construction? Well, despite the logical challenges with that, finding sites that are appropriate to build, busing, transportation costs disturbing the community, redistricting, et cetera, New Jersey Department of Education penalizes new construction. You see, the cost of new construction is $350 to $400 a square foot. Yet the state only pays 40% of $143 a square foot. We can't build much for $143 in these current times. And in fact, that $143 number has been around since 2000, when the Educational Facility Construction Financing Act was passed. So that number is 21 years old and counting. Renovation, then, is officially responsible answer. The costs are not penalized. The state pays 40% of the eligible cost. The eligible cost of renovations, which is bricks and mortar, labor and material to build the projects based on the architect's, construction manager, engineer's estimate, including soft costs. Those soft costs being architect, engineering fees, construction contingency, instruction management, full-time representation, cost of Election Day, auditing, legal services, et cetera. So the bottom line is state aid, significant cost savings for taxpayers and getting your fair share. We started this presentation tonight that your community has not gotten their fair share. This is one way, in green here, to go up to Trenton, bring those dollars back to the taxpayer base here in Cherry Hill Township. So the bottom line is New Jersey school districts that complete projects through bond borrowing capture significant cost savings advantage. Our office is also looking at other ways to bring back dollars to our districts and their communities. New Jersey Smart Start, the Clean Energy Program with the BPU is a wonderful way to do that. Boilers and related HVAC equipment, high-efficiency water heaters, LED lighting are all eligible for rebates. Just like if you replace a domestic hot water heater in your house, that also is eligible for rebate through NJBPU. So we will be bringing those dollars back after the equipment is changed out. So district-wide improvement, some specific things that we came up with on our tours and our analysis. Site improvements, talked a little bit about it, continuing with ADA compliance, site drainage, paving. Paving is also includes some new paving, some new circulation, some new bus loops, et cetera. Also playgrounds and signage. One of the things is a new LED monument sign out front as part of the site work package, identification, emergency services, messaging, et cetera. Play areas, we have them at the elementary school, reconstructing those areas, reconfiguring those areas, and putting shade on those areas for outdoor play areas, something that we heard in our building tours and our community input meetings. Roof replacement. You'll see that there's over $33 million in roofing. The district has done, again, Stockton and some roofing, partial roof replacements, but there's still a lot of work that remains to be done in the bond. We always remove these systems down to the deck, take advantage and compliance of the energy code, five-and-a-half-inch insulation, making the buildings more weather tight, moving forward with proper slope. Front canopies, reconstructing of them, some new canopies, exterior doors, hardware, keeping up with the security initiative. The district's done a great job in replacing a lot of the exterior doors and the hardware in the district. Exterior window replacement, especially important here at this facility in the breezeways and some other areas in the middle schools and high school. Masonry. Your buildings are 1950s, 60s, and 70s, most of the building. All beautiful brick buildings, all have masonry elements that need to be cleaned, they need to be pointed, they need to be waterproof. Our lintels need to be stripped and repaired, as well as our facades. You have drive-in and other stucco entities and cast stone that need to be taken care of. Moving to the inside of the building, main entrance enhancements. These can include main office reconfiguration, principal office, nurses suites. A lot of times, especially at the elementary schools, the nurses suites need to be reconfigured. Think about what the challenges in the medical staff with the COVID treatment of students, the separation. We now can redesign those areas, have some lay-down areas and some other appropriate things for medical care. Flooring replacement. You've been through the buildings. There's a scattering of vinyl composite tile and carpet. We're big believers in vinyl composite tile, especially in classroom spaces. Yes, it might be appropriate for carpet in libraries and offices, et cetera, but generally speaking, VCT is the way to go. Classroom cabinetry. In the 50s, 60s, and 70s, it was very popular to have a whole wall, corridor wall of cabinetry. Cabinetry with sinks that are dropped in. The doors have been broken off over time, repairs have been made. That's not really the modern technology. The modern technology is to use modular units that can be reconfigured, moved around to different spaces, lockable, those type of devices, more flexible in their use. Carter LED lighting, ceiling replacement and painting walls. Making sure that when we bring HVAC IT security through the building, through those hallways, that we return them to proper lit and aesthetically pleasing spaces. Classroom folding partition walls, thing in the 60s and 70s, very vogue, not really great for sound transmission. Taking a lot of those out, using studs and drywall. Exterior fire-rated doors, making sure that they're labeled doors, making sure that we have closers, 100 inches of blazing, and the proper ADA hardware, obviously. All bathrooms, unisex bathrooms, staff bathrooms, and making them ADA accessible. Replacing them, reconfiguring them, making the finishes district standard, developing a district standard for the partitions and the tile and the sinks and the labs and everything that we need to do. ADA compliant interior signage. All your buildings do not have ADA grail signage in the buildings properly mounted at different heights. We'll use that for identification and security. All-purpose rooms, cafeterias, finishes, air conditioning in a lot of those spaces. The middle school and high school science labs, reconfiguring renovations, bringing in new technologies, new sciences, new equipment. Whether that's fume hoods or earth science or whatever needs to be done. Take those areas and turn a negative into a positive. Same thing with the libraries, structural media centers, making sure that we look at different furnitures, different colors, making those spaces teachable solutions and spaces that the students making those spaces teachable solutions and spaces that the students want to interact and to study. Gymnasiums, gymnasiums boils down to finishes, wood floor, you've got some beautiful venues here, bleachers in a lot of cases, especially at the high schools, some are original, they don't function. Locker rooms, I think that was the biggest shock and anybody went on the middle school and high school tour, was the condition of locker rooms, vintage locker rooms. I'm not sure who selected the sizes of the lockers in a lot of those locker rooms, but you saw some of the pictures tonight on the on the rolling slot, it's a very, they haven't been touched in some time. Elevators, new elevators for ADA compliance, one at the elementary school and one at the high school, along with Harp, Sharp, Rosa, West. Modernization, new or refurbishing the mechanics in the existing. And then hazardous materials. We know that TTI Environmental has gone in the district, we have it here, plans on file, we took that information. We know we have vinyl asbestos tile pipe insulation and some plaster surfaces, all currently in the dormant state that are non-primal. Building systems, big, big focus on building systems, indoor air quality. Using this opportunity to take a unit ventilator, remove that, put a new unit ventilator in, increase the filtration rate. New primer hot water system, which is a great system, we'll keep that in almost all the applications. Look at putting in some portable shelving in all the buildings. Replacements then also involve split systems, air handling units, rooftops, cabinet heaters. You have every type of air delivery device in all of the buildings, that'll all be part of the program. Exhaust fans, we replaced them when we did Stockton roof and the other partial roof replacements. But making sure that we take care of and replace those exhaust fans. Making sure that those exhaust fans and those systems are hooked up to a new digital control system and retiring the pneumatic control system that you have. Kitchen equipment replacement, select pieces in the various venues, and also having an eye on nutrition. Not simply going back and replacing like and kind, but maybe doing something a little bit different with the technologies that we have. On the electrical front, security system, I talked about it, increasing door access control CCTV and expanding on the systems that you have. PA telecommunications clock, Alyssa's law compliance, which you've done great strides in. Main electric service, because we're talking about air conditioning all of the spaces. Because we need power in these buildings, that's budgeted for along with branch circus and upgrading and getting the power out to the classrooms. That leads to the next bullet. If we get power out to the classrooms, we bring new power into the building, we can then run convenience outlets, convenience outlets, they're sorely needed in classrooms that again, were built in the 60s and 70s, it didn't have the technology needs that we have today. Fire alarm system replacement, just a few schools, Kingston, Carusi, East and West. And then emergency generators, emergency generators, as I mentioned, are being planned in four schools. But also we have select others that need to be replaced. The district has done great strides on the next item. Water fountains with new bottle fillers, going hands free in a lot of the instances, we have a little bit of work there. And then domestic hot water heaters, tank, modifying the piping loop in some of our buildings, making sure that we get the hot water to where it's needed in the hall lavatories. And finally, new construction, looking at needs of the all purpose rooms, equalizing the elementary schools. Those elementary schools of Barton Johnson, Kingston, Knight, Man and Sharp that don't have all purpose rooms, that don't have that flexibility for P instruction, food service, large gathering, inclement weather, especially this time of the year, of flexibility and scheduling. New main entrance enhancements. We have a situation where we have a main entrance that's on the outside wall with the office immediately adjacent. We can reconfigure that space, sometimes that's not possible because it's on the inside of the corridor. So therefore we have to build, and that's at Hart, Stockton and Rosa. Specialized spaces, Rosa Cafeteria, East High School Auxiliary Gym and Career Labs in whole classroom ring that is proposed for demolition. So the pie chart kind of tells the story about where some of the monies are proposed to be spent. The largest investment would be your interior renovations, those'd be your finishes, your bathrooms, all of your needs inside. Your HVAC is a very, very large component there in green. Also, the electrical component of that, the 37 million complements a lot of the HVC because it's the power supply and the other needs that we have with IT and all that. Site work, you see that number in yellow to the right. We have the roof replacement, I mentioned that already at $33 million. The exterior renovations, $47 million, that's all your masonry, your exterior walls and all of your systems. And then finally, down at the bottom, you've got a piece of where we have new construction for the main entrance enhancements versus just the renovations. And then the new construction piece there that you see in the red color. So how do you all benefit? Well, you benefit in this particular slide because on the left hand slider, some existing elementary school pictures. On the right hand side, through district capital reserve money and district funds, at Kilmer, the classroom looks like that, the hallway looks like that, the media center looks like that at Kilmer. So that's what could be accomplished should the referendum move forward. At the middle schools, left hand side, again, general instructional classroom. Those pictures on the right hand side are some recent photos of projects that I completed in neighboring Maple Shade and in Kingsway, the hallways, you see the multipurpose room with the stage, sound baffling, appropriate lighting, new flooring system, and then the hallway there in the other photos. At the high school, again, dramatic difference. On the left hand side, some existing pictures, you saw some of those pictures when you tuned in this evening and scrolled through. But general instructional classroom, science lab, science labs with different layouts. Auditorium, that auditorium happens to be Clayton's new auditorium. The media center down on the right hand side of the slide, that's Maple Shades Media Center. I talked about doing something that was inviting for the students. Look at the furniture, look at the colors that's in there, look at the LED lighting, look at the different spaces that they have to move around. You did accomplish some of those enhancements at West. West, you have the transaction window, you have that main entrance enhancement there. That's something that would be implemented going forward. The other comment that we got, and the great thing about the tours was the slide that's over my name Garrison, where it says too narrow. We have situations at both high schools where all the students come down from the second floor where that everything bottlenecks into a narrow corridor. Again, 1950s, 1960s, 1970s. Different students today with different needs, carrying a lot of their materials to and from the classes. Bottlenecks, something that we're going to solve with widening those corridors and opening up those air transition areas to reduce the impact of students and staff from one another. Finally, we come to the bond referendum schedule. Dr. Malash talked about the fact that I've been in district almost two years, and that's the due diligence, that's what we've been doing. The first part, building the program, getting the scope of work, getting those schematics ready. So that we're in a position as the architectural firm, along with the engineering support, to submit to the Department of Education in January or in March. Because you see, the end game is down in the bottom of the slide, September 27th, and that date, I've been assured by the director will not hold, we know that's a Jewish holiday. They just haven't given me whether it's going to be October or whether they're going to slide it back a week. My guess is it'll be the next week in October. But those are two of the four special election dates that a district can hold in New Jersey. Districts are allowed to hold elections last Tuesday in September, second Tuesday in December, fourth Tuesday in January and second Tuesday in March. I'm encouraged this year, there have been 10 votes in the state of New Jersey in September. And also on Election Day, that's another date that you can have it. And thus far, the district's success is eight out of 10 have passed. Recently, as large as Lenape Regional School District passed a $66 million referendum a few weeks ago. So appreciate the opportunity to work with the board and to be of service in this exercise. I know we put a lot of information out to you. Again, the specific backup for each school is on the district website, has been on the district website for some time. The tours with the communities that came out, I thank them for the input that they've given us. A lot of the ideas that came forward as we proceed with this process. And this process is like tonight, reaching out to the community, getting the issues. This is your bond referendum, it's not Garrison's referendum, I've passed a lot of referents, who cares? Doesn't matter. What matters is what is specific for your community? What do you hold in high regard, what are your priorities? I'm here to lay out all of the needs and then let the, let the board and the community decide what works best for them for a successful program.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison, definitely a lot of information about the needs here in Cherry Hill. So folks, just in terms of process this evening, again, we're going to spend till about 8:30 going through questions, responses, discussion. There's about 60 people online, there's about a dozen people that are here with us in the auditorium this evening. Mrs. Neary and Mr. Avadia and Stern representing their colleagues on the board. The purpose of this is for the opportunity to listen and to learn, to hear your perspective as decisions ultimately will be made about what will be included in a bond. So we're thankful that so many of you are willing to participate with us this evening. Process wise, we'll take questions when they're available here in the room. And then Mrs. Neary will call on people that want to put their hands up that are online. And we'll kind of alternate back and forth and try and get in as many questions and responses and discussion as we can. I must remind folks that the focus of our discussion this evening is truly on district wide improvements and what needs to be done in terms of the physical plant of the school. I know that this time of year, there's a lot of things that folks have on their minds. We're not going to be taking questions, we're getting into discussions about other topics this evening. We will ask you to save those for the board meeting tomorrow night, or to email them to us or submit them as a quick question. But we will not be entertaining questions beyond the scope of this physical work to be done within our buildings. So Mrs. Neary, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of run us through the questions and answers. And if you want to say a couple of words of welcome as well.
Thank you, Dr. Malash, and thank you to everyone that came out this evening and that have joined on the line. I think what we'll do is we'll start with folks' comments in person, if they want to come up to the microphone, state any comments or questions they have, and then I'll move to those on the line. And we'll alternate that way with board members answering questions or, you know, deferring as we need. So we'll start that way. And then we'll go to the audience first. Oh yes, and state your name and municipality.
Andy McLeven, Cherry Hill. As some of you may know, I run a Facebook page called Cherry Hill Just the Facts. One of the questions that came up recently, which I didn't have an answer to, that I'd like to address to Bob and or Lynn Sugars, about the potential cost savings that one might anticipate with all the renovations that are taking place in roofs and windows and doors and interior finishes in terms of what we might expect as savings in our electrical, our utility costs, maintenance costs and things like that. I hadn't seen it in any of the data that's been put out there. My reaction was, or the answer that I gave was, I thought it was probably on your minds, but it's a little bit early in the process to estimate what that, what that impact will be three, four, five years from now. So if you could just take a crack at that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So thank you for the question, and it is always on our minds. As with adding indoor air quality technology to the HVAC equipment, we'll obviously be specifying high efficiency motors, et cetera, to take care of that New Jersey clean energy program. The district maintains 1.7 million square feet of space. Generally, districts spend between $1.50 and $2 a square foot for their gas and electric. So our experience has been that we probably see a 10 to 20% savings in that. And the reason it's not greater is because we're talking about additional air conditioning of spaces that don't factor in right now to Mrs. Sugar's energy bill. So once we see the complete picture, we will reach out and model that because it matters if we're going to do the chillers, it matters if we're going to do all the unit ventilators, it matters if we're going to do the all purpose rooms that are used, you know, more frequently, maybe on the extended time period and whatnot. So there is going to be a savings, but don't think it's going to be some earth shattering 50% or it's a nominal, usually 10 or 20. And we'll dive down in the details when we get those specific scopes established.
Thanks, Mr. Garrison. We'll go to the line for the next question, it's Kristen Viglietta.
Hi there, Kristen Viglietta, Cherry Hill. Something I've been thinking about since I was at the Rosa meeting last. Are you guys looking at drop off areas for students? Meaning, many of the schools in the district, especially at the elementary level, were designed as walking schools. And a lot of parents drive their kids to school now. And I know at several of the schools, the parent drop off and pickup is less than ideal and sometimes cuts through teacher parking lots. So maybe moving bus loops and making driving loops at many of the schools. I just wasn't sure if that was in the plans. Thank you.
So one of the challenges with that, and to answer your question, yes. If you look at the schematics that are school based, there are many new drop off areas. And especially at the middle school, high schools, having the buses go around the schools and separating it. We have to be mindful that Cherry Hill Township is a community. And that a lot of these schools are in residential communities or on county roads. So road openings are cherished. And we want to make sure that we maintain the road openings. And that when we design and partner with environmental resolutions, we don't just start creating some accesses that can't be achieved through the planning board and when we go back to the township professionals. So yes, we'll be looking on that. Again, the challenge is to maintain on the school property, some circulation, keeping some green space, looking at the stormwater, but probably not changing the ingress and egress routes because they fall on these, the road system that's been established, you know, in the 50s and 60s and 70s.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else on the line or in the audience, please feel free. No question is too small to ask now or give your feedback. It's, this is an opportunity for us as the board to take away. What Mr. Garrison has presented is the needs that he's determined and his team from going out to all the schools, is not necessarily everything that will be addressed. In a perfect world, absolutely, but please, this is the time for feedback. Okay, it looks like we have two more hands on the line, so we have Rick Short.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Mr. Garrison. It's well known that Cherry Hill East walls were weak and, you know, were considered a danger. Could you tell me what school poses the worst danger? Is it something like Carusi's gym roof of like a snow, snow collapse? Can you define what seriously could fail? What, 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 what's your biggest concern?
Well, we have the dance studio or the auxiliary gym that's currently closed as part of East, so you did touch on that. The other areas that are open have been studied by structural engineer, there are reports out there from my predecessor, Avessica. But generally speaking, we have budgeted millions of dollars at each of the schools for masonry restoration, including exterior wall supports. But there's nothing that's been brought to my attention immediately that poses a danger, if that's your question.
Was that it, Mr. Short?
I'm coming in in person to ask the next question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have on the line Stephanie Lopez, and please state your municipality as well.
Hi, good evening, my name is Stephanie Lopez from Cherry Hill. When the evaluations for these remodel, for any remodeling that you guys are doing in the school, did anyone walk around the schools at nighttime? did anyone walk around the schools at nighttime? And I'm only asking this question because when I picked up my child from SAC, the lighting in our school is very poor. So for me, this is a safety concern, and I'm sure it's a safety concern for all parents, especially with the time change. Was the lighting fixtures considered to have more visibility within the school?
So as part of the referendum, and you'll see that if you go to the elementary school details in particular, under the site work, there is some site letting dollars that have been allocated. The district has also partnershiped with PSC and G on a lease program where PSC and G comes and maintains the fixture. They're currently looking at, and Mr. McCarty's on top of this, along with Mr. Bart, replacing some of the fixtures at some of the schools. So the answer to your question is, yes, this is being addressed through the referendum. There are dollars set aside for new LED lighting in the parking as well as some building mounted fixtures. And there's also a partnership with PSC and G through the the lease program that the district entertained, which saves taxpayers money because then that initial cost of erecting the fixtures were by the utility company.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. And and just to note, these are what we're presenting are the needs of the entire district. So what the community wants is the feedback that we want to understand what they feel should be prioritized, whether it be lighting, whether it be HVAC, you know, what work they want to see prioritized. You know, out of this list is feedback to the board for us to sit down and have the conversations and come to a decision of what that bomb would look like. Call on the audience.
Alana Yares, Cherry Hill. It's my understanding when the last bond was passed, it was for a partial amount of fifty two million dollars. And then there was a possibility of going out for another bond, but that didn't work out based on logistics or whatever in the community, however, many years later. And now we're at this almost four hundred million dollar number of needs for the district. But we needed twenty plus years ago, a hundred and ten million dollars. And that's inflated because of costs and everything else. So I guess my question is, what? What exactly, like four hundred million dollars is just a lot of money. And I don't know necessarily if you put out that full amount, everyone's going to want to approve that full amount. So what exactly are we prioritizing? Are we prioritizing the things from twenty plus years ago that we didn't fix? Are we prioritizing new things? What will we cut? And then what is going to be the cost inflation? Because we'll have to go out for another bond to fix the rest of what we're not covering. Like, how much money are we leaving out on the table, I guess, if we don't go out for a full amount? And how much more is that going to be that like it's four hundred million now, maybe it's six hundred and fifty million in ten years or whenever it is, like, when will the bleeding of the money stop? Is really, I guess, my question there.
Thank you, Mrs. Yares. Yes, that is part of the problem when you have deferred costs over ten, fifteen, twenty years, which is what we're facing, which is part of the reason we want this feedback. There's no assumption that the community wants to bear four hundred million. So we want to understand now, before we put together a bond and a plan and take it out and the feedback comes in, well, that's too much or not the right mix. So we just, we want to hear that and understand so we can make those decisions on behalf of the community and start to begin to make, you know, as many of these projects come to fruition as possible for sure. And also I'll go to the line for Lauren Greenberg.
Hi, Lauren Greenberg, Cherry Hill. So a couple of things, I don't know that it's necessarily a question, but I guess a suggestion. You know, I've been talking with a lot of people in my neighborhood, particularly families that have moved in with very young kids. And they don't know anything about this. They don't know that this is going on. And and so you're advertising it a ton in the community in the school district community. But I'm wondering, you know, when you get to that point of trying to sell this bond, can you go to the daycares? And the different preschools, because those are the families that, in addition to the current ones, but those are the ones that are going to really be affected for years to come. And I think it's it's so important to be able to get their buy in on that. So that's just a suggestion I wanted to make. And then the other thing is that I I think it's really important to realize that you know, so much ties together in how the community is is feeling. And I think that, I mean, obviously, I know we're very divided and and there's a lot of division going on right now, but I think that a lot of people felt and still feel like there's not a lot of transparency. And I think that that really needs to be improved for people to buy into this. So I think that's something to consider as well. I I think that there's been a lot of trust lost over the last year and it's it needs to be built back again. And I think that transparency is very key to that. So those are just some thoughts that I wanted to share.
So first of all, thank you so much. I'm sorry, we I wasn't sure if you were finished, Mrs. Greenberg.
I'm done, sorry.
Okay, thanks. So so first of all, thank you so much for, you know, really bringing this to the table. These, this is exactly why we're here tonight. And yes, absolutely, we are, you know, there is a piece that we are, as we are continuing to move through these, we're learning more, we're understanding more, and we're developed, you know, continuing to develop a plan. And there's kind of the there's the beginning part of this, which is right now, which is essentially a lot of listening, a lot of like, these are what the needs are, and then listening to folks to help us understand where we where we need to go, what the community would really like to see. And then the bond will be put together. I think you probably know that because I know I know you came out to at least one of the meetings, maybe more. And then, once the bond is formulated, we will put together more of a plan of making sure that we are hitting so many different community groups in terms of meetings. We do have a meeting coming up with senior citizens, which is a really important group in our community as well, because, you know, we're all this is the schools are the heart of our community. They are are the reason that people move here and that people, you know, want to pay the taxes we all pay for our homes is so we have great schools and we have a great, we certainly have great education here. Our schools are tired. So yes, I think such a good point about the the newer, younger families, definitely a great idea in terms of engagement. And and, you know, we appreciate your input. I think the transparency question is a really important one. You know, I I think that there's definitely, we know we have a long road with continuing to work to, you know, get a sense of more of a trust and a connection with the community. I think we are hoping that we're making progress in that direction. We also know that at times we, you know, we take a step back in that direction, but ultimately we're trying to move forward. And I I know I always want to know what could we do differently? Are there things that people would like to see and hear? And we, you know, we get a lot of feedback and we truly are listening to all of that. And so I really appreciate the the comment. And, you know, we want to know what would help improve more than, you know, more than the things that we think that are we're doing to show a sense of transparency that we're attempting to do. Maybe there's more. So we're definitely open to that. So thank you.
Thanks, Miriam. Okay, next we'll go to the audience and then back to the line.
Hello, Rick Short, Cherry Hill, New Jersey. Mr. Garrison, you say it, and I agree with you. Don't give anyone a reason to vote no for the bond. But at both meetings, at Cherry Hill West and Cherry Hill East, and we all have opinions on bipolar cleaners. My two part question is this. You stated this at Cherry Hill West.
Mr. Short, can you ask the question now? Those on the line cannot hear that. It's not clear. So if you could please state your question.
Basically, you said that it's mandated in the state of Pennsylvania to use bipolar, but I recently checked with Jesse Frye, who's the director of construction for the entire state of schools. And they told me that there is no such requirement statewide. You had this big push for bipolar cleaners. And like I said, we all have opinions on whether or not it works. I think the community just wants to know that you are not going to install bipolar cleaners. It's either a yes or no. It's not like, well, let's wait two years and maybe we will install it. We just need a confirmed no or yes, you're going to install them because what happens is rumors occur. So my first question, if you could answer that is, why is it different from what you're saying to the public to what the construction people at the state of Pennsylvania told me? Can you enlighten me? What am I mis?
I'll be happy to send Mrs. Sugars tomorrow, the documentation that I was furnished by a major manufacturer of equipment in Pennsylvania. In fact, the five largest school districts in Pennsylvania have made that a board policy. And I was told that that was their mandate. But even though that it's not a state mandate, I'll give you the large, large Pennsylvania school districts that have implemented bipolar ionization so that that would support my statement. The second thing that you asked me during these presentations was a consideration, reconsideration of our position regarding bipolarization. You asked me that question. And I said to you that nothing has been etched in stone. I think I actually gave you some specific examples of some differing opinions within my districts. I mentioned that Sterling Regional High School installed bipolarization in the HVAC projects that we just did this particular summer. I also told you the Defford Township Board of Education is installing bipolar ionization in those communities. I then told you that Paulsbury has elected not to do it. So I've given you some concrete examples of some of my districts where we give the advice, give a recommendation, they make their own decision. And I told you that that would be vetted here and done here in Cherry Hill Township Schools. So I'm not going to mandate anything. It's my job to present the options, just like this large facility package, these options for consideration and consumption and decision making. Because absent of me giving options, what is my role in this process?
Okay, my next question has to do with you just mentioned about fire doors and everything else. Is every door able to be locked entirely in the school with the bond proposal? Because, you know, for the last two budget cycles, I've said that doors cannot be locked like Voorhees.
Well, that certainly would be a goal. Any of the interior door proposals or exterior door proposals, if redefined per, and again, it involves frame replacement in a lot of instances because the frames have to be replaced, especially at the elementary schools. We don't have proper width for ADA compliance. So I would envision that especially when we're doing the frames, the doors would absolutely lock after we're completed.
Mr. Short, we're going to have to go to the line.
Okay.
Next up is S. Barry.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Stephen Barry, Cherry Hill. Recently, there's been this big infrastructure bill passed. Lots of money available for different purposes. But there's a lot in there for renovations and environmental cleanup. So I was just curious. I know it's only recent, but has there been any evaluation of whether that's an opportunity, whether it's power, water, broadband service? Has anyone started that process to see if there might be some funding available that way?
So thank you for bringing that up. Part of the select HVAC projects that I talked about in my earlier slides would utilize the ARP funds that the district received. The state of New Jersey received two point six billion dollars, I think the number was, to be divvied up by schools. Cherry Hill Township, I think we're looking at about five point two million dollars in projects for those select HVAC equipment. I think you're also referring to the newest infrastructure bill. Sorry, I lose count sometimes about all the bills that are passed and all the monies that are coming. And we're grateful to have all those resources here, especially in New Jersey. But after hearing that recent vote and and President Biden signature on the bill, I immediately contacted Congressman Norcross's office because I need to be on top of these things if there was additional money other than this ARP commitment. And Mary Cruz, who I interact in his office, responded that I think it was one point seven trillion dollar bill, that no school money was included in that and that the congressman was fighting hard for New Jersey to get it, but he didn't, she didn't think it made it into the bill. So I was a little disappointed with that. Maybe that's something that can be explored or or maybe she'll do some more research. But that's the information that I got upon hearing the news that that infrastructure bill was signed in by the president.
And Mrs. Neary, Dr. Malash, it is now eight PM. We have about thirty minutes left for Q and A. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. I was gonna say, on the line, we have Stephanie Graff.
Hi, it's Stephanie Graff, Cherry Hill. Couple of questions. As you guys work to get this narrowed down potentially, because I do think four hundred million is a lot, although every ounce of it is desperately needed. I wanted to talk about the East turf field in the East Stadium specifically. I know that we don't have lights there, and I know that was in question three of the last bond that didn't get passed. So we still don't have lights or grandstand. I wanted the board to think about that because I think there's twofolds. I think having lights allows it to be revenue producing. I think you can bring in other sports and community groups that need to use that want to use that stadium. I know you know, Cherry Hill Field Hockey uses it, but gets fifteen minutes at the end of kind of the high school practices because there are no lights. So I I think you could end up having revenue producing out of that benefit. So I want to make sure that you keep in mind some of these costs that could actually bring in additional additional dollars after that. I do think it's pretty critical. I think the spirit, one of the big reasons that the spirit of East is probably lacking compared to West is because we don't have those activities that can be done at nighttime, like Friday night football. And and I clearly understand that we could go over to West and do that, but we don't really want to go over to a different stadium to play our home games. So I I think just keeping that in mind, I think it does bring together the community. It brings together just the East community and and the entire community, and it does have revenue producing. And I guess I would also like to say, I do think the transparency of this bond is a hundred and fifty percent better than the last bond. So thank you, Mr. Garrison. Thank you, everyone else. It worked because I think having the exact things that we're looking at and dollar amounts to it is critical. I think every one of those items is critical. And I would also say that I think it's it's hard. Those presentations are really detailed. They're really, really good. It's hard to just go online and look at them. And I know we are still trying to think about some types of videos, more pictures to try to put, you know, before and after and what that looks like. I think the people that took the tours of the schools, it was completely eye opening. I think that that was probably fifty people in total of five tours. You know, that that were one time people that haven't seen that before. So I think while that was great for the fifty people that were there, we have, you know, eleven thousand students and a lot more families. So just some way without exposing security threats that we can get that message out going forward would be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we're going to go to the audience.
Hi, Beth Becker, Cherry Hill. I actually just, two of the things I was going to say are things that Ms. Graff just said. First of all, the transparency in this process is so far beyond the last one that I never would have said this the last time around. But my second comment is that, you know, Ms. Neary said that you guys want to hear from us and what our priority you guys want to hear from us and what our priorities are as stakeholders in the district. But with all the work that you've presented to us, I feel like, you know, we may each know the schools our kids are, sorry, we may each know the schools our kids are in and everything, but you're the expert in terms of the architecture of each building, what's most needed at each building and what the priorities should be at each building. And honestly, I feel like that, you know, if you were to prioritize projects, what would that look like? Would be my first question, I guess. And then I also would just echo what Ms. Graff said about getting the word out in terms of the current state of the buildings. If that is, when you go to the senior center and to any other places, if that's video, if that's photographs, but showing people what state the buildings are in currently and what it could be, I think some of, like the things that you showed earlier, but even on a, I mean, I would say go all out, you know? Like really hit it home, you know? And the third thing was, I'm still hearing from people, where has our, you know, where has our money been going all these years? Right? I still, after all this time, I am hearing people that don't understand the fair funding issues, don't understand that the district had to prioritize. I think that is a big element to hitting home to people why we're in this position and why we really need this so desperately. And that it's not a failure on the part of the district in terms of spending all these years, but just working with what we had, you know, and prioritizing education and programs. And then the last thing would be, you know, I know that anecdotally, we all know that people move to Cherry Hill for the school district. But I don't know if there is research out there, if there's evidence out there that shows property values being tied to the success of schools or, you know, how people feel about the schools and sending their kids there. If there's evidence-based research about that, I think that could go a long way towards people who don't have children in the district. Because, you know, in terms of how much it's going to cost us raising our property taxes, you know, how is that offset by how our values, the values of the whole, all of our properties are gonna go up? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. That was a lot. Thank you. No, it's okay. We want the feedback and ideas.
Ms. Neary, can I say a couple things?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mrs. Wilson, thank you for the comments, Ms. Becker. Mrs. Wilson is just putting up a slide that people can see on the screen and those of you that are here in the room, that does go through and go through some additional background about fair funding, which you did bring up, there's a QR code. The link to the website for the Cherry Hill Fair Funding Group is here. So we do encourage people to take some time, go through some additional reading and look at that information. So thank you for bringing that up. We'll make this will be available afterwards as well. Thank you.
Just to react to a couple things, because the last two speakers had some things in common. One, I mean, we sure have tried to be much more transparent. I sometimes do wonder if people mean transparency, but giving the benefit of the doubt that they do. You know, Mrs. Sugars and Dr. Malash and this board have spent about 15 months poring through the commentary of the last bond proposal. And we've built strategic planning specifically on the items that were brought up. The reason that why not new schools is on the slide deck is because that was a resounding comment. In a previous life, all board members here were part of fair funding. And I will tell you the long and short of it, because I wrote the last petition that I know of that fair funding did is, we were shorted $300 million over 30 years. It's not a small amount of money, and that money we will never return. The only mechanism we have to get the money back from the state that they absolutely owe us is to pass a bond. That gives us 40%. And so, you know, that could be very dramatic in our context. The work that we're doing, because work must be done in the schools, whether the bond succeeds or not, whether we have community buy-in or not, we have a sacred trust to protect our students and our staff. We have people in our buildings that must be protected. When we do that, because we have to and it's the right thing to do, we pay 100%, not 60%. On a note of transparency, this will be our 20th plus meeting that we're doing before there's a bond that's not only finalized, but really contoured. That's a lot of meetings. These meetings did not happen in the lead up to 2018. We heard that there needed to be a lot more input and a lot more people involved, a lot more questions. And so, you know, whatever caller's doing today is absolutely the right thing. We need to get together on this. Every year we go debt free, we are literally leaving millions of dollars on the table that the state would gladly pay. They've built a mechanism to do it. So I really appreciate it. And I think, you know, we certainly have tried to be transparent. I mean, you've seen a lot of Bob. You know, we chose him, he's great. He's architect of record for 72 districts. He's passed 90, or not yet, soon to be 95, but at this point, 75 referendum. We wanted a pinch hitter, you know? And we wanted to be able to engage at each step of this process. Now, the other thing that's coming up is, this is not just important for the members of our community that have children that will go to the schools. It's not true. I don't know what the data is, we will have to gather that. But the health of our schools in Cherry Hill, it is totally linked to this town. There is nothing else that is an institution that employs the most people, that educates our young, that builds essentially the middle-class wealth of this Cherry Hill society than the school district. There's not a person who would move here for, I can't imagine anything else. As nice as the Cherry Hill Mall really is. Nonetheless, these schools are our fate, they are our greatest resource. And they are incredibly important, whether you're a senior, whether you don't have children. If you live in Cherry Hill, this is the, this is the holy grail of this town. So thank you so much.
So you asked about the prioritization based on my professional experience. The Department of Education did that job for me. Because when they passed the Educational Facility Construction Financing Act, and it's on one of my slides in 2000, they set forth a criteria to grade the regular operating district applications, many of the projects that, if that program was alive, we would be applying for. And they established a priority level, level one, level two, and level three. So they kind of, in the department's own way, prioritized the needs. And so the applications were looked at in the first level, first and foremost, for building envelope, the structural skin of the building, and the essential building systems, your HVAC, your electrical, your fire alarm, etc. Their second tier, and not passing judgment on the tiers or anything else, was your finishes, your lockers, your floorings, your ceilings, your lighting, your interior finishes, and even your bathroom renovations, they had on it on tier two. And tier three, for what it was worth, was any new construction. New construction being specialized space or capacity generating like a classroom. So that's the model that Department of Education rolled out in 2000.
Thanks, Bob. Also, just want to throw in there, when we fund all our projects from our capital reserve, one, you're never going to be able to do everything and stay head above water in that mechanism. Two, it's money you're diverting from your operating budget that we could pouring into programs and other things while still keeping money in your capital reserve for projects. But again, that you're funding at 100%, you're not getting any money back. And it's kind of a slippery slope. And knowing from fair funding, when you go back, God, actually, close to 12, 13 years now, right? We kept money in our capital reserve to ensure we could do these projects, and we were then subsequently penalized. When, you know, government changed, they came in, they said, if you've got this kind of money to put here, I don't need to give you X in state aid. So while we did the right thing, we were penalized for it. So it's a balancing act. But when, you know, the reason the bonds exist is they are the mechanism to get these large-scale projects done and keep things running and then not diverting so much money from your operating budget into just capital. So I just wanted to make that point clear because it's kind of an important distinction. But thank you for bringing that up because it is connected to the fair funding piece. And I am going to go to some callers on the line before we circle back to additional questions just in the audience so that we can get everybody in one. Mrs. Neary, I apologize for the interruption, but we are at 8:15 PM. So we're down to our last 15 minutes. We'll try to move along, I think, as quickly as possible, as many questions and comments as possible. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Carolina Bevitt on the line.
Good evening, Carolina Bevitt, Cherry Hill. I have two comments and a question. First comment is, you know, unhappy people will probably not vote in favor of a tax increase, even if it's desperately needed. And there are still a lot of unhappy people with really strict quarantine protocols, etc. So I'd love to see the district move more towards a, you know, common sense policies in that direction so that people can feel more confidence in the system at large. Also, I want us to make sure that whatever we pass is sustainable on our tax income, you know, the property tax income that we have. Because what we've learned, obviously, is that state money is not a guarantee. So we should really not be including that in budgeting. I mean, obviously, we're going to include it in budgeting somewhat, but we can't be relying on it for upkeep, etc. And then finally, my question is, when will there be a proposal for the bond? And once the proposal is made, will there still be opportunities to give feedback? And if so, how long will that opportunity last? Thanks.
Okay, thanks so much, Carolina. I just, real quick, so yes, absolutely. We have done a lot more projects and we are building, continuing to always build in within our budget and our operating budget, as well as our capital reserves, ongoing projects. Because that's something that didn't happen probably as much as it needed to, which I think is a kind of transparency-related question. You know, what are we doing? This is what we're doing with it. And I believe right now we're about 72% of our funding from the state. That's going to increase year over year till we get to our full funding. But, you know, I think to your point, you know, our, we're happy to say that we live in a township that hasn't had its taxes increased from the township for, I think, 10 years, something like that. So most of our increases are going to be related directly to our schools, which of course feeds back into the health of our community, of our future. One of the principals said at the meeting, you know, 50 years ago, people made a commitment to build these schools and fund them through taxes. And we have an obligation to keep moving forward, to continue to support our schools as we continue to support our district. So some interesting points that I've heard.
Thank you. And we'll go to Tracy Spees on the line.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tracy Spees from Cherry Hill. I don't have a question, I just have some feedback. I attended the Carusi Middle School walkthrough and then I listened to Dr. Rick's spiel about Kilmer at their PTA meeting. Because these are the schools currently that my children are in and will be heading to next. From the feedback, I would love to be able to pass everything and more because I think our town deserves it, but it's not going to happen. So to focus on what I think our town would be smart enough to pass are the safety and health concerns. I would love to see like a survey of each principal from each building and asking them, what do you feel is your top priorities? Now, I had asked Dr. Rick that. He told me for Kilmer, it's the HVAC, bathrooms, the ADA, electrical upgrades, and the vestibule. You know, I would, it'd be nice if everybody had an LED monument, but is it needed? No, I don't think it is. Carusi, we saw some cracks in the hallway floors. It's not pretty, but right now, I don't think it's a safety concern. It's, you know, the ceilings are a safety concern, the roof, the HVAC there at Carusi. To me, those are safety and health issues. And I think to get something through to people and to pass, if you focus on safety and health of the kids and not just the beautification of things, I think you will have a better chance of getting something passed and approved. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have a number on the line. Please state your full name and municipality.
My name is Jeff Potawatson, I live in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. 40% of eligible costs of renovation. That basically means that you take the amount of principal we have, and that's what our district will have to fund. Otherwise, in a case of $400 million, the total, the total cost with bond interest and principal is $600 million. And you could use the figures from the previous bond to figure that out. At a school board meeting, I said that if that 40% of eligible cost was raised to 60% because we've been cheated all the years, and believe me, I know how much we've been cheated for all those years. It's 500, 600 million if you include, if you adjust for inflation. If you really want to get your fair share, I would hope the architect and administration and our leaderships try to get that number up from 40% to 60%. And again, I said that at a school board meeting. And at 60%, the amount of principal, instead of, let's say, 400 million, would probably come down to 350, 300 million. And then we would be getting or beginning to get our fair share. Otherwise, cost-wise, 400 million is 400 million when it's between 30 and 40%. And I hope someone understands that. Look at the old bond figures from the bond that didn't pass, and you'll see what the numbers are, 306 million. And we were responsible for 212 million on a bond principal of 210. So just look at the numbers. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Potawatson.
Mr. Short, you've had three questions, so if you could limit it to one. We are running out of time. Hello, Rick Short, Cherry Hill. My one question is, if you want the bond to pass, do we have any updates on sponsorship from Dr. Malash or Ms. Neary? Because if you don't have a collective sponsorship going and people want to vote yes or get people excited, we have no sponsorship coming in, it will just hurt to sell the bond.
Thank you. And clarification, Mr. Short, when you say sponsorship, are you referring to P3? Naming rights, just be specific.
Yeah, yeah, all the naming rights and all that stuff, yep.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you that we've been actively engaged with our grant writer, applying for grants and searching out money. We are always open and willing to talk to people that have money that they would like to share with us in naming rights or in addressing something to be done in the district. We are easy folks to find, please, you know, whether it's local business owners, small business owners, regardless of what field that they are in, we are always looking to talk to people that have funds that they would like to share and that would be mutually beneficial for our students and community and for those business owners. So we are looking forward to some of the many people in our community who seem to have those contacts introducing those folks to us so that we can have additional conversation.
Mr. McElvein.
Hi, Andy McElvein, Cherry Hill. Two points, for people in the past who have complained about the lack of transparency in dealing with the district, I just wanted to say, this is what transparency looks like and this is what it feels like. And I commend the people on the board and in the administration for taking the steps that they need to do to make transparency more apparent to the people in the community. Second of all, usually I talk a lot about, you know, being a bean counter in my career and doing spreadsheets. But I want to talk to you a little bit about peeling. I'm a 42-year resident of Cherry Hill. My three children started into Cherry Hill schools in 1984, last graduated in 2003. I'm not getting any younger. But I realize that within the next number of years, I'll be leaving my house on the west side. Who am I going to sell it to? Okay, it's a four-bedroom house. We moved into a four-bedroom house because we wanted our kids to go to the Cherry Hill schools. And as a senior citizen, on a fixed income, I recognize that there are a lot of people who find the potential cost of a bond, whether it's $400 million or $200 million, $300 million, however you. whether it's four hundred million dollars or two hundred million dollars, three hundred million dollars, however you, you, uh, put it together, that the cost, if you look at it, of a four hundred million dollar bond is about a dollar thirty five, dollar forty a day. I, as a senior citizen on a fixed income, recognizing that there is value in doing what you are proposing to do, um, am very much willing to put that amount of money per day into an investment in our school district. And I hope that a lot of senior citizens recognize what it is that I'm saying. And parents who don't, or people who don't have their children in schools, as I do, do not. I'm very pleased with the, the education my children got and I would love to have that opportunity go on for another twenty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have time for one more question and there's one more hand raised in the audience. So.
Sir. Hi, uh, Peter Oxer, Cherry Hill. Um, I'm a, I've been a resident for about twenty years. Um, I've had two children, uh, go through the school district. They're both in college now. Um, so kind of in, in line with the, the last comments, uh, I'm now someone that does not have a children in the school district. Um, I agree that the schools desperately need these repairs. Um, however, that said, uh, the recent elections, the governor elections, uh, we heard that there's no lie, Cherry, uh, New Jersey is the highest taxed in the nation. Uh, within that Camden County is one of the highest, uh, in the state. And, um, Cherry Hill is the highest in that, uh, county. So, uh, from the Cherry Hill website, um, the average, um, assessed home value is two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And the homeowner would pay nine thousand two hundred and twenty two dollars a year in property taxes. That's equates to four point one percent of the assessed value of the house. Um, which is, I cannot find any, anywhere in the country that pays four point one percent of the assessed value of the house in property taxes. So, um, that being said, obviously, these repairs need to be made. Um, as someone that does not have children and would then side on, uh, not voting for this bond, because I say, well, my property taxes are just going, going up. Is there any study to show, um, that our property values may increase if we pay this bond? So let's say everybody's property taxes go up an average of a thousand dollars a year. Do our property tax, do our, does our property values then increase because we've got nicer schools? Is there a study to say, well, you can expect maybe ten thousand dollars? And that would, that would maybe swear people who, uh, don't have children in the district, that their property values would then go up. Or on the other side, if we don't do this work and the schools just become even worse, does that, is there a study to say that negatively affects our, our property values?
I can take part of that. I don't know empirically if there's a study or if you could say causally, what it looks like for your property values. New Jersey and a few other states are unique in how they fund their schools through property taxes versus other states that may have countywide systems that have a completely different mechanism for funding their schools. New Jersey typically vies for the top seat in the country for their public school system. It's typically between us and Massachusetts, if I'm not mistaken, and we kind of flip flop at some years between the two. So I, I don't know if that's a direct correlation. Um, we did see a bit of a boom during COVID as a lot of folks from either northern New Jersey or New York came down to southern New Jersey for good schools and a good value in their home. Um, now, has everybody gone through and seen the schools? Maybe, maybe not. They know of our programming. They're not going and saying, I came here for your buildings, but at the same time, they should have, buildings should match the programming that we provide, which is what we're trying to get to. If year over year, you don't fund your schools and as people drive through your community and they're not happy in what they see, it certainly is going to, to at some point negatively impact your property value. Right? You don't, you're not going to want to buy the house and the school is falling down. And then you begin to think, well, what's going on inside? Do, you know, do you care if you drive by and it's collapsing? So I mean, there is a point where it just empirically is going to impact. Um, whether there are studies, I, I, I don't know. I would know that it would be impactful to me, but I grew up in the area and I know of the programming. Hence why I've stayed in New Jersey my entire life and, you know, I moved to town over because I know Cherry Hill has phenomenal schools and programs for my children and will be here after they graduate. I, I don't look to run away or, or move. So I want the schools to be strong and performing and beautiful buildings beyond being here so that maybe my kids want to come back here or stay here. I don't necessarily want them to move away. Um, so I empirically, I don't know. Is it something we could probably find? Yes. Causally, I, I would have to say it would have to impact your values at a point. Yeah, it would. And based on the last bond, when they did the tax values, there was a calculator which would be out there again. It wouldn't be a thousand dollars. I think it was two hundred something dollars for a two hundred and fifty million dollar bond. So if you double that, maybe four hundred dollars a, a year. And these are all just swags off of what I know based on the last bond and the calculator. So I don't want people to be alarmed. It would not be a thousand dollars even at a four hundred million dollar bond. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thanks.
So people understand, if there's any increase in the, in the tax levy, uh, due to a bond, it's a one time increase. It's not like it increases four hundred or five hundred dollars every year to pay for the bond.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Stern, Mr. Avadi, Mr. Stern, do you want to start? And then Mr. Avadi will wrap this up.
Sure. Thank you so much. So I really appreciate, again, everyone coming out and the very, you know, helpful uh, in, you know, questions and, and comments. Um, you know, I, I think sometimes I, it goes through my head the taxation without representation. Um, we pay very high taxes in New Jersey and, you know, we have for many years and we haven't gotten our share back to our town. This is one way we can start to get the money back. Um, there are many things that are kind of, as I joke, above my pay grade, what happens at a state level tax wise. Um, I'm just a board member in a, in a township and on the school board. I can't fix that piece um, personally or even in this role, but what I can do is say, if we're going to pay these high property taxes, let's get forty percent back and fix our schools in that process. So that's one of my big takeaways. Um, just want to say, you know, again, um, we, we, we want to continue to have money in our operating budget to develop our programs, to move, continuing to move toward twenty first century learning. If we have, if we're getting forty percent back and we can do a lot of the building improvements, then we don't have to spend some of those operating budget monies on building improvements. We can spend it on growing our programs, adding new, um, you know, modern approaches to, to our learning, uh, developing our teachers. And by the way, our teachers also, in order to continue to attract great teachers, you know, they're, they have choices. They can go to different school districts. They can work in places that have newer buildings, newer facilities. So it all fits, spins into the picture. And the last thing I just want to say too, and again, this speaks to kind of, because I really think a lot about the heart of this town and the future of this town. You know, many of us, for many people, our, our houses are our greatest asset. So, and there, sometimes where we have our, our greatest kind of life savings is in our houses. So, you know, I, I, again, just the piece about making sure that we, we continue to offer and people a great reason to move here. Um, and, and I just, you know, hopefully, we're going to take all this information. I do believe we will be able to put out in January, something that makes a lot of sense from the feedback we're getting. So please keep sending the feedback. I know Mrs. Wilson has, um, monitors the plan at chclc.org, that website. Uh, I'm sorry, email address to send comments or questions. We absolutely welcome them. Um, please continue to send them and, uh, give us your feedback so we can put something out that makes sense. Thank you.
Great. So I'm playing around with some words here. Um, but this is not the beginning of the end. This is really the end of the beginning. We've gone out to all schools at this point to get feedback. This is our first widening the circle. There will be more. Um, I want to thank you for participating tonight here and in cyberspace, wherever you may be. It's critically important to participate and it's important to be critical. Um, this is the stage where we really do have to, to one of our caller's points, start to iterate what will be our proposal at the end of January for this bond. Tonight's not about a bond. Tonight's about bond as a mechanism on an improvement plan that's been carefully developed. Very valuable. We do have to march along and that time is about two months to do that. Um, so be critical. The people who are being critical on whatever side of whichever aisle you are, it's critically, critically important. Um, the board is committed to this process. The administration is our partner in that. We have been working hard, long, many nights out. Uh, when I say twenty meetings, that's twenty meetings that Mrs. Sugar's been at most of them. Um, and the board members here have been at most of them as well. And the board as a whole, you know, I don't know a campaign like that, that the board has, has gone night after night after night after night. It's not making us popular at home, but it's critically important and we're happy to do it. It's a pleasure to serve you. I mean, and really, I mean, we, we want to do this for the kids and for our community and for our families. Okay, uh, CHA is here and Zone PTA. It's great to have this panel and us standing in front of you together, shoulder to shoulder, because that's what it's going to take. You know, if we got all the votes online and in this room and every, every person that we know, it's not enough. And so we need our institutions to be strong and for people to interact at all times. Um, transparency is key. Financial stewardship is key. We hear you. That is absolutely important. And most important, as my final message to you tonight, is to stay involved. There will be a thought exchange coming out from tonight. Please use it. Yes. Ah, the thought exchange. Yes, type it in. Let us know. Let us know how you're doing. Plan@chclc.org it is. Um, you know, email the board, make public comments, schedule in your calendar the next town hall, which is December fifteenth. And if you don't feel your question's been answered, ask it again. I mean, it's one of those, you know, we, we are trying to crowdsource everything, but being involved and we all care about this community. It's not that, we know you care about this community and please know that we all care about this community. The schools are the key to it. So we look forward to partnering with you and getting something we can accept. We can shepherd our next generation with and we can really sort of save our town with, um, with your help. So thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Stern, and thank you, Mr. Avadia. Uh, and I'm thrilled to thank you all for participating in our town hall this evening. As Mr. Avadi and Ms. Stern both relayed, there are additional opportunities to share your perspective. On the screen is the link, uh, for the thought exchange. Mrs. Wilson will push this information out. You'll get it in email. It'll be available on the website. We do want people to share their perspective and their thoughts. Uh, if you have more detailed and more specific things you'd like to share, use the email address, plan@chclc.org. We do have upcoming, uh, town hall meeting scheduled. Another community wide one is for Wednesday, December the fifteenth. Uh, Mrs. Wilson and some of us, some of the board members will be meeting with a group of senior citizens as well in December. Uh, and I know that there's a meeting that's being scheduled with our Cherry Hill Special Ed PTA and our Special Ed Parent Advisory Group as well. Um, and again, one of the, the, just because topic didn't come up this evening, uh, like some of the ADA work or some of the ADA concerns that are there, does not mean that they are not primary uh, in, in our focus of what's taking place. I do want to thank all the panelists, uh, Mr. Redfern and Ms. Smith, representing our administrators and our instructional and certificated staff. Thank you for being here this evening. To our two, two student board reps, Kevin and Ariana, thank you for being here, representing the eleven thousand students um, that are here in the district. Uh, to Janet Hung, the Zone PTA Chair, Janet, thank you for being here. The voice of the PTA and the representative voice of the parents is so critically important with everything that we do. To our board members, Ben, Miriam and Lori, thank you for being here. Barbara is our time people and public information as always. To Kwame and to Lynn Sugars as our assistant superintendents and to Bob Garrison. It's been a wonderful night for us. We've received a lot of information. Continue to share your thoughts and your perspective. Hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving and time with family and friends and a time to relax. Thanks for coming. Cool. And special thank you to our technology folks for all that they've done for us this evening. Thank you, Mark and Marcus. Well done, fellas.